Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Oxnard residents and those watching at home. I am Ronald Arwelo, a member of the Inter Neighbourhood Council Organization, IMCO, Chair of the East Village Neighborhood and your moderator for tonight. We are proud to present the candidates for District Six for the Oxnard City Council and have all three of them present with us tonight. The IMCO of the City of Oxnard consists of the chairpersons and executive boards of Oxnard's forty-four active neighborhood councils, all being volunteers, giving residents the opportunity to participate in governmental decision-making processes and serving as an advocacy group for each of the neighborhood councils. This forum is being hosted by the IMCO. As an organization, it cannot and does not publicly support any candidate for political office. This is an opportunity for voters to hear directly from the candidates to get the information they need to make an informed choice when voting. We are glad that all are here to hear from our candidates and we do hope that the voters get the information that they need. The rules of this forum have been previously communicated to the candidates as follows. Candidates will be given two minutes to present their opening and closing statements. Questions will be posed to all of the candidates and each candidate will be given sixty seconds to answer each question. Candidates may have papers to refer and/or to write down notes. Candidates should note the timekeeper to your friend right of the aisle who will provide notice of thirty seconds in green, fifteen seconds in yellow, and five seconds remaining. Please no capping or shouting so we can hear as much as possible from our candidates. We will now begin with the opening statement from all candidates. The seating order was randomly drawn prior to this event. Again, please take note of the timekeeper in front of you. The first candidate, Ms. Castanon, will start with an opening statement, followed by Ms. Perez and then Mr. Valenzuela. You can now begin, Ms. Castanon.
Hi, my name is Francine Castanion, candidate for District Six. It's my second time doing this. Hopefully this time it'll stick. That's the plan. I am currently an employee for the Department of Veteran Affairs. I house homeless veterans. I've worked with the County of Los Angeles, County of Ventura, Santa Barbara, SLO, and Kern Counties. I am an AFGE union member. Previously, I was a teamster driving trucks and I moved on a little bit. And I am hopefully your candidate for District Six here, looking to make more improvements to my community, uplift my neighbors, and make sure we finally get our piece of the pie of resources and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perez, you can now begin, and then next will be Mr. Valenzuela. Please, Ms. Perez.
Thank you to the IMCO forum for hosting us tonight. I'd like to start off by thanking my family and team who are in the audience for all of your support. I would not be sitting here without many of the important figures in our community. Again, my name is Michaela Perez. I'm a community organizer, a DIA, a sister, and I was raised by a single parent. For the last six generations, my family has been residents here in the city of Oxnard, and I actually started working in the community at a really young age. Growing up here has shaped me into who I am, and after receiving my Masters in Public Health, I am proud to bring back my skill set and model frameworks back to the Oxnard community that has raised me. For the past few years, I have worked at the forefront of policy and government, and I've been honored to have the opportunity to talk to so many of my neighbors and residents to hear about issues that are facing our community. It's clear that here in Oxnard, we need to address both the issues that we are facing today and the issues that we will be facing in the next ten years. I've heard from our community about the concerns of the lack of lighting, issues around parking, substance abuse, homelessness, dumpings in our alleyways, and much more. We also need to look to continue to improve basic needs services for everyone, from our children in schools to our seniors and veteran community. I'm ready to work across the board with other council members in the county to address these issues, to make sure every resident in District Six has an advocate with roots tied to our community. I am invested in making Oxnard a place in which my family and yours can call home for future generations. My priorities as a city council member are community health, wellness, public safety, small businesses, including economic development, affordable housing and homelessness, equitable restoration of city services and Oxnard's next generation of youth. I'm looking forward to diving into these issues, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Goodbye. Please, no capping. Thank you. Mr. Valenzuela, you can begin.
Yes, thank you all very much for hosting this event to be IMCO and for everyone who joined us tonight and everyone at home watching via Zoom. My name is Arthur Valenzuela, Jr. I'm running for Oxnard City Council because I believe that South Oxnard deserves a city council member that has working class background and experience getting the job done and representing for, serving for working class families. I'm very lucky to have my family being here on my dad's side in Chumash. You know, we've been in South Oxnard for the past three generations right on Cedar Street, which I've been very happy to come back and rebuild my family home a couple of years ago after the pandemic, while my mom's side of the family were business owners here running the El Topo de Ode nightclub and the El Dorado restaurant in downtown Oxnard. You know, I've seen this growing up that my family values were really installed into hard work and perseverance. So, yeah, it pushed me, just wanted to serve more for my community into like becoming, or getting elected as student trustee for the Community College Board, where I got to serve the thirty thousand plus students in Wood Park Oxford Ventura College, eventually transferring to UC Santa Barbara, getting my degree, and coming back to work for the California State Legislature for some member of the House of Lords for recovery issues like housing, water, and environment. Ultimately, you know, it also pushed me to do more for my community, such as creating district elections, bringing a vote, bringing a Voting Rights Act violation to the city so that we, South Oxnard, could have representation on the council that we would fight, that we fought off before the power plant and join other activists at the Performing Arts Center, closing down the Cal Energy Commission. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you all. We will now first hear from our candidates about the important topic of homelessness and affordable housing, first from Ms. Castanon, next from Ms. Perez, and lastly from Mr. Valenzuela. The first question is, "Overpaying is defined by the News Department of Housing and Urban Development as spending more than thirty percent of a person's or family's income on housing costs." Based on the latest Oxnard housing element, just as of Oxnard 2021, thirty-one percent of owner-occupied and fifty-four percent of renter-occupied units are overpaid. What measures could be implemented to alleviate overpayment? You may begin, Ms. Castanon. You have one minute.
So those people that have Section Eight, VASH vouchers, housing choice, any kind of subsidy program. HUD implements a five to ten percent increase every year and allows landlords that increase. So the first thing to do is for our housing director to have a suspension on that until we can get a understanding of the rents here. Second of all, there is no average median income for our rents. Because we split the district, or we split the city with Thousand Oaks and other areas, it makes it difficult for HUD to understand our average median incomes. Owner-occupied, that's, you know, people who bought their homes on a high, they'll have to either streamline or they'll have to wait to refi and be able to make their homes more affordable or go into loan modification if necessary for those that are homeowners. As far as renters, it's a lot of work that the housing authority needs to do in regulating with these landlords that they don't do now.
Thank you. Ms. Perez, you're up next.
Yeah, I think the affordable housing crisis is not just an issue that we see here in South Oxnard. It is an issue that we see both at the state and national level around how to increase more affordable housing. And I think that it's important that we, you know, that we are in compliance with the state mandate to increase affordable housing here, not just in South Oxnard, but citywide. And I think when I, when I often talk about affordable housing, I think about it from a perspective of livable wages as well as increasing economic opportunity for our residents here in South Oxnard. We know that this is a systemic issue that affects many of our community members and that we have to look at cross-sectional approaches into best practices that we know are working in bettering our opportunities here to increase affordable housing here in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And lastly, Mr. Valenzuela, please begin.
Yes, so I would also like to state that overall housing and the lack of affordable housing is a systemic issue that isn't just, is just not a special issue for Oxnard. It's everywhere. But, you know, there's lots of things that we can do at the local level that is the burden to provide more affordable housing for working families. For example, under the city, I was considering on the future, like a fifteen percent inclusionary housing policy. For me personally, I would be more in favor of a twenty percent inclusionary housing policy. And also this past year, there was a, the city council voted for a four percent rent cap, and the previous holder of the seat voted to not do the two percent. And so I know if I was elected, I would be in favor of voting for a two percent rent cap increase for families, but also even looking back at the mobile home rent part view to see what we can do to reduce that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. The second question on the same topic of homelessness and affordable housing will be answered first by Ms. Perez, then Mr. Valenzuela, and then Ms. Castanon. The second question is, "There are complaints of RVs and motorhomes parked unsafely and potentially illegally on South Oxnard streets. Should enforcement be heightened so ordinances are complied with? What are some other or better solutions?" Ms. Perez, please begin.
Yes, and this is again, an issue that we don't just see here in South Oxnard, specifically around affordable housing and making sure. I think it's important that we, that we work together to develop solutions, you know, in partnership with our housing department, our co-compliance, as well as our public safety officials to ensure that our residents have access to safe housing. I think that I'm a, I'm a big advocate for increasing affordable housing, and we know, as just mentioned in the question, that many of, many of our community members are resorting to living in RVs. And I'd like to just highlight the fact that there are many issues around housing insecurity, and many of our communities are either paycheck away from experiencing housing insecurity. And so I want to just highlight as well that both housing is both an invisible and a non-visible. And I definitely will continue to support affordable housing and the development of affordable housing in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you. Excuse me, sir, please. Ms. Perez, thank you very much. Mr. Valenzuela, you're next.
Yes, no, in the past couple of months, I've had these conversations of a vast amount of RVs and motorhomes parked on our local public streets. Honestly, what I would like to find is where we can find these public-private partnerships that we've discussed so much, where we can permit these folks to park their residency there in places at night and provide services for them. You know, I think it's, you know, if they have a mobile home, you know, what we can provide for them is like, you know, like they want use it to keep their items, you know, what can we do for like lockers for them or even mobile showers for personal hygiene? You know, it's much, it's a way that we can address these issues without as much cost. So, you know, and also working with our police, you know, to make sure that there is some form of order that folks are taking care of and that better health and safety is also prioritized with these public-private partnerships and access to other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And Ms. Castanon, you're in that last on this question.
So we've had a significant number of increases because part of it is people that are surfing, if you will, down CCH have had to be moved back down here. CCH has been crumbling after the rain, significant rock falls. It was very dangerous, and they're doing a lot of seawall work. So people who were living there were either moved up towards Pacific Palisades or the L.A. area, or they were moved down here. The other thing is in 2018, the Homeless Commission had moved forward with a safe parking ordinance. The city attorney had already approved it. It was moving forward with the city council. They allowed it to die. We have plenty of community partners that were willing to put forth the cost. We had churches, we had Salvation Army, even Walmart was a participating counter, and they killed it. So in the sense of having those moving forward, the city council already gave us their decision on that.
Thank you, Ms. Castanon. The last question on the same topic of homelessness and affordable housing will be answered first by Mr. Valenzuela, next by Ms. Castanon, and last by Ms. Perez. The last question is, "If elected to serve as a council member, how will you address the homeless and encampment issues in District Six? More specifically, would you do something different or continue with the current policies?" Mr. Valenzuela, you have one minute.
Yes, so kind of what I suggested in my previous response is like the access to like the public private partnerships, you know, so that they wouldn't be put in encampments, largely along the Cal Gisler and Blackstock neighborhoods. A lot of them are seen near the creek in South Oxnard. And, you know, providing a place where they can go to during the day or evening, like provide for temporary shelter or like mobile, or lockers, restrooms, or personal hygiene would be a big plus right there. But, you know, these are just Band-Aids, solutions that we can do right now until we get our fully funded navigation center built in downtown Oxnard to make sure we can provide our full services for these unhoused individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Ms. Castanon, you're next.
So the biggest thing is having continually these services. The city and the county don't have that. They have, they don't even have enough mental health workers right now to handle what we have even post pre-COVID. That was an issue I had with them when I was on the Homeless Commission pre-COVID. They didn't have enough supportive services. We don't have enough case managers, social workers. We don't have the supportive services that are needed to help get these people through what they need to get through, get them into housing, and continue the wraparound services in there, especially if there's addictions, if there's other issues going on, not to mention reunification. They try to unify people with families. Sometimes that's the worst thing you can do because the family is the toxic. There's a lot of barriers that people have, and that's why they're homeless. And rather than working through these barriers and getting them there with the continued care services, we're just slacking something on it, calling it a day. That's why so many people fall back out of housing after their house, and then we're right back at it again.
Thank you, Ms. Castanon. And last, we'll wrap up this topic with Ms. Perez.
I think that we need to invest in long-term solutions. Obviously, we can have an entire forum focused on addressing the housing crisis and particularly our unhoused population. I think that as a, as a city council candidate, I will continue to advocate for resources for our unhoused population to ensure that social services, mental health services are available for our community. I think that the city is moving into the direction with the center that we are creating for unhoused populations. But I think we need to continue to advocate to ensure that these, these solutions are more long-term and systemic so that people have, are on a pathway to employment opportunities, on a pathway to being able to live on their own. And I, and I know that there's a development that would be perfect to bring here in South Oxnard as well to house our, house our unsheltered population.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. I'm being told on Zoom that they are not able to hear about the candidates in time. At this time, while I go to the next topic, please kindly move your microphones closer to you. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to our second topic about city management. Ms. Perez will be first up, then Ms. Castanon, and then Mr. Valenzuela. The first question on the topic of city management is, "District Six is made up of Cal Gisler, Redwood, Bryce Canyon, North and South, Blackstock, North and South, Pleasant Valley Village, and South Winds neighborhoods. How would you support these neighborhoods specifically and in general, the Inter Neighbored Council Organization's mission to give residents the opportunity to participate in governmental decision-making processes?" Ms. Perez, you're first.
There are many dormant neighborhood councils in our district, and it is my priority as an Oxnard city council member to activate the dormant neighborhood councils in our community. I think it's crucial that all of our communities have information and are able to offer input on pressing issues in our community. That as I've sat in on various neighborhood councils, I think we also need to continue to ensure that our community members have access to translation and information that is deciphered in an accessible way. Many of our community members don't input what is happening in our community, and I think it has to do with the lack of access to information. And as city council member, I will continue to ensure that our neighborhood councils are activated and have the transmission services needed to ensure that all of our community is able to have a seat at the table.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Castanon, you're up next.
So the biggest struggle we had when I was in ECO chair was getting City Hall to listen, not to mention the issues of just getting people informed of what was going on. City Hall didn't want to do postcards. City Hall took away the flares. City Hall did not give a lot of resources, other than social media, which is limited. There's not a lot of my neighbors are on social media, to be able to get them engaged. Jack has worked for years knocking on doors, getting neighborhoods to try and get activated, and they get frustrated because it's just the same thing again. We get activated, we get to work, and then we hit brick walls with City Hall. They're not listening to what we're telling them. They're not listening when we're calling them, and it's almost impossible to get things done. And it infuriates people that are giving us the most valuable thing they have, their time. It's irreplaceable. They're giving us their time for nothing, just to be dismissed. That will change.
Thank you, Ms. Castanon. Mr. Valenzuela, you're last on this question.
Yes, so for the neighborhoods that reside within District Six, you know, before 2018, I think former councilwoman Janet Pedia was the last council member to come from South Oxnard in quite a while. I can't remember how long, but, you know, but since 2018, when we switched over to district elections after the Voting Rights Act lawsuit, it's actually been able to have a voice for South Oxnard, specifically these neighborhoods through the former council member. But, you know, that's what we're willing to have now with these council members and able to speak with these different councils to guarantee that different neighborhoods get their support services, like representation for lighting, for park maintenance, for roads, for alleyway renovations taking place right now. And I think, you know, especially, you know, with having such a strong Spanish-speaking population that the measure of funds, or measure we fund recently funding the Spanish-speaking services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. The second question on the same topic of city management will be first answered by Ms. Castanon, then Mr. Valenzuela, and last by Ms. Perez. The second question is, "In April of 2022, the Oxnard Police Department reported the lowest levels of major crime in a decade, per data reported as part of the department's Uniform Crime Report. Residents, though, have not felt as crime is decreasing. Why do you think there is a disconnect? What would be your approach to crime reduction?" Ms. Castanon, you have one minute. Please begin.
There's a lot of things that are civil issues that don't get reported by PBs. Sometimes it's TROs. Some of the PBs go civil. For those of you who know, temporary restraining orders, domestic violence. Porch pirates is another one that gets miscategorized a lot of time. Petty car thieves, when they break into your car. Vandalism and graffiti are things that don't always get filed appropriately or people just don't file those reports because Oxnard PD now requires those reports to be done online. And once they're done online, then somebody eventually comes out and moves forward with the report if they deem necessary. Sometimes people could just file the report, and then they receive a receipt for it, and they're able to file with their insurance. But there's no engagement with the officers, and that's where the disconnect is. They're being told, "Go to the app, report to PD with the app, report the vandalism here." And there's no engagement between the community and PD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castanon. Mr. Valenzuela, you're up next.
I guess in response to this, like, you know, I think it's, you know, usually positive when you see these stats show the reduction in crime in our neighborhood. But I think it's also like how we put this as stands from like my perspective for like racial justice is that, you know, like for folks to feel safe, they want to have a better relationship with the police as well. I think what the RIBA report, they show, and the, or I can't remember the acronym, but it came from the Department of Justice this past year about the need for racial training and, and racial training and services between the police and local community members for them to feel safe. You know, because folks don't feel safe when they don't have a good relationship with the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And Ms. Perez, you'll be last on this question. Please begin.
As a candidate for Oxnard-
As a candidate for Oxnard City Council, I will always focus on the solutions that we can, we can build in our community and building off of existing programs and initiatives in our community to ensure that our, not just our, our, our residents are safe, but all members of our community feel safe and welcomed here in the city of Oxnard and particularly in District Six. As I mentioned, I, I grew up in this community. I walk the streets of this community, and it is actually a privilege to be here in front of you all to speak about, um, the important issues that are happening. And for me, I think when we think about public safety, we also need to ensure that we are looking at evidence-based model practices, practices that we know will work. I have the support of Oxnard, um, Police Officers Association, Association to work collaboratively, uh, into address many of the issues that we see in our community. And one of those issues is to ensure that we invest in our youth and our residents so that they can have alternative pathways to, to opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And the last question on the same topic of city management will be first answered by Mr. Valenzuela, then Ms. Perez, and last by Ms. Castignan. The second question, or the last question is, Oxnard has a council manager form of government. What makes a successful relationship between the city council and the city manager? How would you want to define your relationship with the city manager? Mr. Valenzuela, you have one minute.
Uh, yes, uh, so I think overall, it's a difficult position to be a city manager for such a large city. Uh, it's, uh, you know, every little problem that could happen is on their plane. But, you know, my personal relationship is really trying to make sure what does the city manager need to be successful in terms of that? Is it, you know, in terms of like, what kind of funding for staff do we have? Uh, what programs are we going to look at? What database, uh, evidence do we have in order to put more policy forward? And for me, I, as someone who comes back from a labor background as an elected U member, and so I like to see the manager as someone who really takes, uh, employee, uh, labor feedback, uh, to heart about what we can do to improve our programs. So for me, it's like, I judge people based off like who they work with and how their relationship is with them are, and being like supportive of their goals, and doing my best as a council member to fund those goals, uh, for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Next, Ms. Perez, please.
I think, you know, just want to be very clear about what the role of city council is. And it, you know, as a city council member, we are responsible for developing policy recommendations and solutions. And it is the role of the city attorney to implement and initiate, um, those processes. And I think that it's critical, um, that we as city council members have relationships across the board to be able to get things done and to be able to work together collaboratively, um, to ensure that we are able to navigate the challenges and the, and the growth that we anticipate for our, for our community here in the city of Oxnard. And that is exactly why many of the community members here, uh, locally are supporting my campaign because they know that I can work across the aisle to get things done.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And now we'll wrap up this topic. Last with Ms. Castignan.
So the, the job that city council has is oversight. So when the city manager is eating their job like Mr. Nyha, who was federally indicted in the city he ran away to, that is our responsibility to make sure at the end of the day, the buck stops with us as an elected official. Is the city manager balancing the budget? Is the city manager managing the city? What are they doing all day long? At the end of the day, we have to answer for those budgets. When we sign those forms saying, yes, we certify these documents, we are putting our name on it saying we read, understood that. And there are very little checks and balances right now in Oxnard, and that's something they've been working for, for quite some time. And the fact that we have such a high turnover of financial staff is disturbing because we don't know where the checkbook is, oh, what's going on, and council needs answers on that. So those checks and balances need to come back to make sure that oversight is there.
Thank you, Ms. Castignan. And now we're going to move on to our third topic, municipal economy and finances. The first person will be Mr. Valenzuela, followed by Ms. Castignan, and then Ms. Perez on its first question. The adopted budget of Oxnard for Fiswinder twenty-two to twenty-three is six hundred sixty-seven million dollars. What is your experience and management style with finances and budgets? Mr. Valenzuela, you have one minute.
Uh, yes, so I previously served as student trustee for the Ventura County College District. Oh, there we saw my two-hundred-million-dollar, uh, year budget, and I also served on the Bonner's Oversight Committee for it. There was a more than a billion-dollar budget for the three college campuses for infrastructure. Uh, so my experience is right there. And I think ultimately, you know, our job is to make sure that we are, um, responsible with, um, our, with our expenditures, like we have to predict what the revenue is with sale, the sales property and other multiple business taxes that we, uh, that we, uh, put into place, but also making sure that we, we, we spend appropriately and have some funds into reserves, you know, for ready-made funds for our community. So that's, uh, some of my experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Ms. Castignan, you're up next.
So currently, we are overlooking about a billion and a half dollars to be a for housing benefits. I have to account for every dollar and every minute of my time of that spending as we're spending it now. The city council and the city manager should be able to account for it just as much as I can. I not only have to send these reports up to the Department of Veteran Affairs, those are also reports that go onto congressional reports and are for the public and in HUD reporting. So those kinds of things is how efficient this city should be in its reporting. Anyone at any time should be able to look up any part of it and understand it clearly and efficiently, and be able to explain it. A five-year-old should be able to look at it and know exactly what's going on. They should stop with the complexity of these things. If I can make a complicated billion-dollar report easy for anyone in Congress to read, then they should make reports here easy for any one of the residents to read, and they should be done by districts. This general fund, general everything, no. What is each district spending on?
That's your time. Thank you, Ms. Castignan. Ms. Perez, you're last on this question.
Managing budgets is actually one of the critical pieces of my work, um, whether that be as a community organizer as well as managing large federal grant funding programs. I, I actually worked on a seventeen-million-dollar workforce development initiative in partnership with, with the federal, um, entity to, to increase opportunities for many of the young people here throughout the state of California. Uh, managing those seventeen-million-dollar funds required a high level of attention and detail, reporting, collaboration, presentation skills, to be able to ensure that what we are reporting is digestible for all of our communities to, to understand. Um, and even apart of, you know, aside from, you know, working on a seventeen-million-dollar budget, I've also helped continue to bring, um, an additional eleven million dollars in funding. So this demonstrates my ability to not just manage the budgets, but also increase, um, string line opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Appreciate it. The second question on the topic of municipal economy and finances will first be answered by Ms. Castignan, then Ms. Perez, and last by Mr. Valenzuela. In July twenty-twenty-two, Ventura County Star article reports that Oxnard's unfunded liability makes up approximately twenty-eight percent of Oxnard's pension debt and needs one-point-one-two billion dollars to fully fund retiree benefits. In August of twenty-two, the city council considered pension obligation bonds. Would you vote in favor of pension obligation bonds? How would you fully fund retiree benefits? Ms. Cut, Ms. Castignan, you have one minute.
So the city, of course, missed the vote again. So when other cities were doing the pension obligation bonds, it was in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, when rates were at the lowest. We currently pay the state six and a quarter percent we're paying into the Calpers, Calsters right now. The, when everyone else is doing pension obligation bonds, they were doing it at one and a half to two percent. If we even attempted to do that now, we would be upside down. As far as the unfunded liabilities, that's where conserving our funds, knowing what's in our budget, so we can fulfill those obligations. But since we don't know what the checkbook is and what's on it, it's kind of hard to pay those debt obligations right now.
Thank you, Ms. Castignan. Ms. Perez, you're up next.
Yeah, I think that tapping into, um, you know, innovative, um, you know, strings of funding is, is going to be crucial as many of our communities still suffering the impacts of COVID-nineteen and the economic impacts of inflation. Um, as, as I mentioned in my last conversation, that I have skills of grant writing and bringing funding revenues for our city to thrive. I don't view our community as, as being one of a deficit, but as an opportunity for us to grow innovative opportunities for us to tap into so that we can continue to ensure that all of our, our, our members of our community are thriving.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And Mr. Valenzuela will be last on this question.
Uh, yes, so for these unfunded liabilities, you know, I think every worker deserves to retire with a void for uh, pension with their, but you know, this is not just an issue in Oxnard. But, you know, back when I was on the Community College Board, I did have to work for the UC's, uh, system, you know, this was seen throughout the, uh, everywhere that it seems like we all have all these unfunded liabilities. I think no single local government can handle this on its own. That really does need the state and federal support to ensure that our, uh, community retires properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. The last question on the same topic of municipal economy and finances will first be answered by Ms. Perez, then Mr. Valenzuela, and last by Ms. Castignan. There is a huge disparity between South and North Oxnard. How will you ensure that South Oxnard gets its equitable share of funding and attention? Ms. Perez, you have one minute.
Yes, I think that as I've talked to many of our neighbors, that is, and, you know, many of the people in my family, there is definitely a need to increase investment, ensuring as a candidate for Oxnard City Council, I will ensure that funding is allocated for South Oxnard residents to ensure that we increase investment and economic opportunities for us to tap into. Many of our community members are struggling to put food on the table. And as mentioned, at, you know, at risk of, of housing insecurity. And I think that it's important that we invest in workforce development initiatives, professional development initiatives, and other programs that we know work, um, to ensure that our residents here have access to, to economic opportunities that allow us to thrive.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Mr. Valenzuela, you're up next.
Uh, yes, I think as we've seen, like, you know, anyone in South Oxnard is that there has been a record of neglect for decades where North Oxnard has, was, uh, you know, been a little more, I guess, uh, well-off. I would, I would say lightly. And, uh, you know, with the use of district elections now, since we've had them, it's, you know, guarantees that we have council members here that can put a voice, making sure, you know, these new funds with like measure E that South Oxnard is getting share for infrastructure, their lighting, parks, roads, alleys, et cetera. Um, but making sure that, you know, as these other, as we lose our federal funds, um, in the future, that, you know, making sure that we are giving resources to South Oxnard. And, you know, like North Oxnard is very beneficial because they have those, uh, property taxes where they pay for funding, but, uh, South Oxnard tends to not get, get what you from the city council before, if I feel that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And Ms. Castignan will wrap up this topic with you.
Well, first off, South Oxnard doesn't get a share of cap and trade funds. I have yet to see fifteen years of project that has been brought to South Oxnard with cap and trade funds, which is supposed to happen because two of our neighborhoods qualify, Cal Gisler and South Winds. Yet no projects have come forward, nothing, not a thing to put anybody to work in my neighborhoods from the neighborhoods. Second of all, the measure E funds. It's just another debt for measure O. But the other thing is, we're not even looking at the infrastructure. We haven't updated pipes. We haven't updated our electrical down here. Where infrastructure is so behind the times. We can't even have anyone put a, a Tesla charger over here if I wanted to. And the problem is, that is investment to bring dollars, to generate the tax revenue for South Oxnard. We pay nine and a quarter percent. When you go to the store and buy something for a dollar, you're paying a dollar-ten for it. Where does that ten cents go? Because it sure as hell isn't down here. River Park has its own Belarus, and nobody else does, but we sure aren't getting our piece of the pie. And let me tell you, we're paying that for time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Castignan. Right, please, no laughing. We're going to move on to our fourth topic on just South Oxnard. Ms. Castignan will be first up on this question, then Mr. Valenzuela, and last, Ms. Perez. The J Street drain project is an important element in reducing potential flood rates from Wayne Me Road to Redwood Street. Also, in addition to the recent fires and pandemic, there is an ever-growing earthquake threat of the Big One. Has Oxnard done enough to safeguard its citizens from natural disasters? If yes, in what ways? If no, what should be done so that we can be better prepared? Ms. Castignan, you have one minute.
So no, we are not prepared for the Big One. We don't even have an emergency plan to evacuate the city, and the event like Thomas Fire was a perfect example of that. How are we going to get out? There's only two ways out for us. It's either down Savior's Road or hope Wayne E. Roads open that day. And not to mention the rest of the city. We'll have Silver Strand and everybody else coming up to come out through the center. And not to mention, we don't even have safe routes for fire police in the event of emergency to get to us. People are not being educated that they have to have at least seven days' worth of resources per person in their house. That's water, food, toilet paper, and where to go to the bathroom. They are not being educated on those things because we will be without cell service, without light, or anything like that. Look at all of these natural disasters and the months it takes to just get to the people, to get them the basic services. We're a coastal city, and no one's going to come running for us except us.
Thank you, Ms. Castignan. Mr. Valenzuela, you're up next.
Um, honestly, recently this past, uh, month, I, you know, my team were out knocking on doors, talking to voters like we all are, um, doing for this campaign. But, you know, the day where, that one Saturday where it was particularly raining, uh, I saw how bad it got next to the J Street drain where my friends and I couldn't even walk on the sidewalk because it was flooding. We had to take alternate routes, um, walk on, climb on fences and just make sure we could get through the streets. So, you know, I, I don't see us as being particularly prepared, uh, for that sense of a major flooding. And as we saw with the Thomas Fire and other, uh, emergencies, like, you know, the need to get, uh, communities like an eighty-five mask, like, for free, uh, to respond to this right there. I was a frontline worker, working with businesses, we were man involved, and, you know, I was lucky my employer, uh, provided them for us because I didn't even bought for it. But I don't think we're necessarily prepared for any major emergencies, uh, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And Ms. Perez, you're last on this question.
Yeah, many of our community members are impacted due to the changes of, of temperature and climate in our community. I, um, was just part, participating in a, in a food drive with the United Farm Workers because many of our farm worker community has lost access to wages due to the floodings that are happening in our community. And I think that as we think about, um, you know, ensuring that all our communities have access to opportunities is obviously important, but making sure that when we prepare for natural disasters, that we look at approaches that work. And, um, specifically here, I know that the city of Oxnard, as a candidate, I will continue to advocate for an investment in a water reserve. I know we just see nationally and globally many of the earthquakes that are happening. And I anticipate, um, with us living close to, to, you know, in proximity to beaches, that we need to ensure that we have a, a water reserve in place to ensure that all of our community has access to their basic needs.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. The next question will be first by Mr. Valenzuela, then by Ms. Perez, and last by Ms. Castignan. The second question is, there was no District Six representation for the Port of Wayne Me's thirty-four acre temporary parking lot to Arctic Appeal. What is your opinion on this project and how was it good or bad for District Six? Mr. Valenzuela, you're up first.
Uh, yes, so I was at the, uh, both the planning commission and the city council meeting. And, uh, I spoke generally in favor of the thirty-four acres, but I also think that there needs to be a comprehensive plan between the Port of Wayne Me and its plans for expanding Eastward into the city of Oxnard to be of influence, and the city of Oxnard for any, like, future development that they want to move. Um, you know, it's just that, you know, they're, they have other plans, uh, for a reduction for discharge and cargo. And as a frontline worker, I want my community to stay, uh, you know, environmental policy is a form of health and safety for me. It's a form of safety for the community as well. And, you know, I think really pushing the port and like the shipping industries and so forth to adopt like electric vehicle equipment for moving cargo, for, uh, the building infrastructure to charge, disequipment, and so forth, in order to have growth, but also be mindful of our health and safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Ms. Perez, you're up next.
Yes, um, I've often had many of these conversations, and I often talk about it from an approach of having a balance between, um, the environment and, and creating economic opportunities for our community and ensuring that we are, are, the state of California is actually mandated to, to move towards a green economy. And for me, as a, as a candidate, I think it's important to help prepare, um, industries in our community to, to transition, um, into a green economy to ensure that our, our employees are prepared for this transition that will be in, in place and that they have the skill set and training needed to transition, um. And I continue to advocate for ensuring that we, that we turn that zero, um, climate plan. Um, and I continue to advocate for ensuring that we that we turn that zero um climate plan.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And last, Ms. Castaneda with this question.
So, five years ago, I was supporting it, and some of you were there, some of you were not. And uh I'm still supporting the project because it's one of the few economic drivers we have in South Oxnard. They're a major employer for a lot of people, a lot of internships so kids can go to college. They use those internships to launch a really good school. And to finally clean up that lot and do something with it is filing something South Oxnard wanted. We're gonna get additional lighting, security. Someone's gonna pay attention to an area that has been neglected for far too long. The port is one of the greenest ports in the world and have been recognized worldwide, not just here. They're not tuning their own horn, and that's why they have such the limited shipping that comes in out. If you don't meet their green standard requirement, you're not coming into this port. They've made that very clear, not to mention all the partners that they've brought to this community that we did not have globally otherwise. So they've done quite a bit, I supported them there, and I'm gonna continue supporting.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. That's your time. Thank you very much. And our last question on the topic of South Oxnard will first be answered by Ms. Perez, next by Ms. Castaneda, and last to wrap up the topic, Mr. Valenzuela. Question is, in September of twenty twenty-two, the Oxnard City Council voted for a sixty million dollar aquatic center in South Oxnard. Just four months later, the city council reduced the scope of the aquatic center due to increased cost estimates. Do you support its construction, or will you vote to cancel or further reduce the scope of the project if given the opportunity? Ms. Perez, you're up for this question first.
I support the development of the aquatic center. I think that South Oxnard, as we are hearing this commonality that there's this lack of investment, many of our community members would have to travel um to to get access to a to an aquatic center. I mean, really, as we're talking about um investment in our community, there there was great opportunities to tap into grant funding um that we'd be eligible for to to protect the safety of our community, especially because we live in proximity to many of the beaches. So we need to ensure that our our community members and residents have access to the ability to to learn how to swim um in a in in a time where we have many of our sea levels rising and we're um increasing many natural disasters in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Castaneda, you're up next.
Yeah, didn't support it when they came out with that idea, and we don't support it now. The five million that they got for the community pool, yes, and you know what'd be nice to the community pool? A YMCA. There's over seventeen thousand children in South Oxnard, high school kids, junior high kids that have nowhere to go, nothing to do all day, because we don't have anything over here. The closest Boys and Girls Club is on Fifth Street. How is someone from Wayne Me Road gonna hike it to Fifth Street? We can't go to the Wayne Me one because that's for the Wayne Me kids. So there's nothing for those kids to do. So to put the community pool with a YMCA, a PEL, a Boys and Kids, something, something for our community to have, something our seniors can use. A maintenance problem that we're gonna have down the road because Oxnard does such a great job maintaining the stuff they have now, don't they?
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. Please, no clapping. Mr. Valenzuela, please, we'll wrap up this topic with you.
Uh, yes, I strongly support the pool and the aquatic center overall. You know, it has so much commute to me benefits for South Oxnard and should be like a symbol of major investment into us. Because this is a pool that's not gonna just be here for one year, it's gonna be here for decades to for South Oxnard to to try to swim and be a community area for uh for folks. And also, and also, um, the person that got the five million dollars for the startup funds, uh, State Senator Monique Limon to get this aquatic center for Oxnard, uh, she has endorsed my race as well for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And our fifth topic will be about culture and entertainment in Oxnard. The first person will be Ms. Perez, then Mr. Valenzuela, and Ms. Castaneda on the first question. The question is, there will be some major changes in the entertainment scene. Just recently, Strawberry Festival will move into the Ventura County Fairgrounds and the possibility of Carl's Adventure Village transforming to Channel Islands Harbor. What, if any, actions should the city have done to keep the Strawberry Festival? Do you think Carl's Adventure Village will be popular for Oxnard? And if not, what should be there instead? Ms. Perez, you have one minute.
Yeah, I'd like to be very clear that the the Strawberry Festival, it's like any business model, they get to choose where they wanna go. So I wanna make that very clear that, you know, they they dictate where where they place on their, you know, events. And in terms of the, you know, the Carl's, um, you know, investment in development in our fishermen's work, I think that we need to look at best modeled practices to ensure that this is an opportunity for businesses to thrive and that we ensure that economic opportunity is available um for all of our community members and to ensure also that it is um cost-effective for many of our community members to tap into. And so I definitely um would want to ensure that our our community members have a have a stake in in being able to participate in the activities that are available um with this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Mr. Valenzuela, you're up next.
Uh, yes, uh, so like the previous guy I just stated was like, no, the Strawberry Festival is its own business or nonprofit. You know, it decides where it goes. Um, you know, going to the Ventura County Fair is unfortunate for us and the city because of the facts our vision receive, but we don't know what's gonna happen to it in the near future seeing as they might do their own development at the Ventura County Fairgrounds. So they might just end up coming back here to Oxnard as well in the future. We don't know what that's gonna look like in the near future. Um, regarding Carl's Village, um, I guess when I see it, like, I try to look at it like, uh, this is model plan, like, what's the life cycle for this business for development? Is it still gonna be there in next five, ten, twenty years? Um, and so like, like, what's, is there a transition plan if it starts like going on here? Because like I, um, I I just think of like all these little uh court initial, like, who's it there? Parks that have been built across the United States, but you know, they kind of go away eventually. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And Ms. Castaneda will be last in this question.
So for those of you who don't know, the history of the Strawberry Festival, it started here in Oxnard. It started at the beach where the embassy suites are, started there, and as it grew, it grew this way. Tried downtown, but it found its home in South Oxnard and been there ever since. Do you not realize how many little nonprofits would make so much money there from the donated strawberries? And they would have their volunteers work the booth, because I've worked a number of those booths. But that was ours, Oxnard. When people talk about the Strawberry Festival, they're talking about our Strawberry Festival, not Ventura's, Oxnard's. And as far as the uh over there at the uh ward, I still haven't seen what the Bard family deeded it to the county as. So we're talking a lot of development, but the Bard family still has a say on what we do within in the end. And until we have that deed, um, it's kind of hard to say what we need to support to go.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. Our second question will, on the same topic, will be first answered by Mr. Valenzuela, then Ms. Castaneda, and last by Ms. Perez. Question is, the number one priority for city council in their twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, five-year priority under the category of quality of life is to quote, restore and enhance youth programs and launch the Oxnard Arts Academy for local youth in South Oxnard, end quote. What are your plans for improving youth programming in Oxnard? Mr. Valenzuela, you have one minute.
Um, for me, and I come for this by just saying I'm a big policy nerd, um, definitely uh wanting to really just uh trying to develop these youth programs for city hall uh for youth, like eight internships, uh, so they can understand local government and trying to develop this program between our state and federal elected officials so we can train uh, so we can uh train our youth in how government should operate. And it gets pretty, and we used to have youth council, which was active before, but, you know, hasn't met in years. Uh, so that's basically the right there. And in regards to culture and arts, like, you know, we're very lucky to have a lot of influences on here, um, from like, you know, my time in high school, uh, you know, the cello to um, the recent uh Anderson Pack, um, um, last that we had a couple of years ago here in Oxnard. And like, they didn't really tap into those resources directly at the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Ms. Castaneda, you're next on this question.
So in order for us to have arts, we need to open our art. Our museums are closed. Gold wings, they have refused to repair the roofs so our youth can go there. Our Carnegie Hall is still closed. And as far as doing anything down here, then they need to build something so people can come. We have a lot of talented kids around here. They've got hustles, they can sing, they can do titty talks, they can do all kinds of things. And rather than encouraging and moving them and having them flourish and doing that, we have nowhere for them to go and do it. So until we have somewhere here for these kids, it's just a dream.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. And Ms. Perez, your last on this question.
As a person who has, this is actually, many of my skill set is working on the ground with youth initiatives and and working and cultivating the next generation of our leaders. And I think it's critical that we continue to invest um in professional development opportunities. I know that there are many modeled programs around the the state and around the country that work to ensure that we increase exposure opportunities to our community here in South Oxnard. We have the skill set, we just need access to the opportunities. And I agree that we need to reopen many of the, um, you know, performing arts centers as well as um services that are culturally relevant for our community so that we can see ourselves reflected, not just in decision-making processes, but throughout um diverse workforce sectors.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And our last question of this topic and of the forum will be first by Ms. Castaneda, then Ms. Perez, and last by Mr. Valenzuela. Question is, the city has given more support to the Carnegie Art Museum and the Oxnard Performing Arts Center in the past. How could the city support these cultural institutions, or are there better ways to support the vibrant culture in this city? Ms. Castaneda, you have one minute.
So the Performing Arts Center is a jewel. So Bill Suhu, the first Chinese mayor of California, which Oxnard had the privilege of having, is the one who brought that to us. He left his honeymoon to come make sure it opened. His wife told me the story. And that is quite the gem that we have. We have neglected it, abused it, and we need to put it back to what the glory was because so many people would have opportunity, their kids would perform. People would have, you know, shows that they could do that they would have no other opportunity. And putting the investment in other infrastructures that we need here is the way we need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. Ms. Perez, you're up next.
Many of our community members here in in the city of Oxnard, in particularly South Oxnard, have many skill sets, whether that be mirrorless, um, um, actors, performers. And I think that it's critical that we invest in in opportunities for them to be a part of arts and and culture. Um, this is exactly the, what is modeled here for the city of Oxnard to fill and bring more inclusive approaches um that we know to to help offset um some of the, you know, issues that we see around juvenile incarceration. And so providing alternatives for people to have the space to to invest in their in their purpose and their skill sets is is a critical piece. And as a, as an Oxnard City Council member, I will continue to advocate um for those services for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And Mr. Valenzuela, please, we can wrap up this topic with you.
Thank you. Um, so, yeah, we're very lucky. First of all, we are very lucky to have the Carnegie Museum and the Oxnard Performing Arts Center. And I think that it definitely has like, you know, like most of South Oxnard, you've seen a lack of investment into our open infrastructure projects. And I think ultimately, if any, when we look at this, I think like kind of a city staff uh point of view of like, there's all these projects that the city wants to work on, and we don't have the staff or staff retention to work on these issues. Uh, you know, we have so much that we want to throw at the staff and they don't have time to reinvest on these uh infrastructure projects. And so basically, the city just recently had to reprioritize some of their public works and infrastructure goals uh to do so. And I think, you know, I would love to see the Performing Arts Center on that list right there of priority things. But until we do so, we can't do so until we actually get our staff to um give them the support that we need to get them going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And that concludes the question portion of our forum. And thank you all to the candidates for mostly staying within the time most of the time. So for closing statements, I'll I'll clapping, but. Thank you. We will now begin the two-minute closing statements from all candidates in the reverse order of the opening statements. The first candidate, Mr. Valenzuela, will start with their closing statement, followed by Ms. Perez, and last by Ms. Castaneda. You can now begin, Mr. Valenzuela.
Uh, yes, uh, so once again, thank you all for coming tonight, um, enjoying the past hours speaking with you all right here. Uh, so, you know, running for this position is really trying to uh continue some of the work that I and others have done in the city when it comes to actually enacting district elections from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen to now, um, finding off a Ford power plant in our community and making sure we have a safe city for our undocumented population, protecting them from ICE. Um, that's some of the stuff we've done. And looking forward, what else we can do, um, for i- is, you know, making sure that we prioritize something, safety, reduce industrial pollution here in Oxnard. Someone who, you know, I work at the Port of Longshoreman and, you know, has an environmental justice background, but how can we bridge these gaps together? Um, um, working, working with the city manager to expand these job pipelines that we're doing in order to make sure that we build these gaps between local industries and Oxnard College and other training centers. Uh, someone who worked in Fort Forest Development to the Community College, just there, uh, you know, I could work through that. And also, you know, ensuring that affordable housing to make sure that families do not work through fall to the cracks. Um, so that way, you know, we, so we can keep them uh healthy and safe, uh, but also making sure that we have housing there for young families and our senior citizens and to reduce homelessness. Now, that's why I have a variety of support from State Senator Monique Limon, former Assembly Member Doc Williams, SDIU seventy-one, which represents most of the city's staff, um, Cause and Action Fund, who are big supporters of, you know, environmental justice, and, you know, so many other local elected leaders from the Oxnard School District, Wayne Me Elementary School Leadership and Oxnard High School District, because I've been around for the past ten years. I don't talk about what I'm gonna do. I've done plenty of work for South Oxnard. I walk the talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Ms. Perez, you're up next for two minutes.
The time is now. We need to vote for strong candidates that will build strong relationships across the board. We can't wait for another six generations. In fact, six generations for now. I wanna see our community thriving and ensuring that our residents in our community feel safe and welcomed. I am proud to be the community's candidate. I have deep roots here in Oxnard. My family members and nephews are growing up in this district and community. This election dictates where we will go and what we can do together. Our community deserves change that will allow us to be innovative, work together, and build strong relationships to get things done. In such a short period of my life, I've been able to successfully scale workforce development models, cultivate the next generation of leaders, and empower communities to drive change. It is an honor to have the support from the Congressperson who represents this county at the federal level, Mayor Pro Tem Brian McDonald, who understands why it's important that we work together across the aisle, and Assembly Members who have previously and currently represented the city of Oxnard and the state legislature, people at the county level and a council member who currently represents South Oxnard. I am the choice for public safety from Oxnard PD, firefighters and healthcare workers. Wrapping things up, I'm the community's choice and what my cam- campaign stands for. Please vote for me. I'm committed to listening and working for our community to address the changes that we need to see, not just now, but in the future. Please get involved and and happy to share my website information, MichaelaForOxnard.com.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. And last, Ms. Castaneda, please begin with your two-minute closing statement.
I will say, they have been walking for quite some time, for candidates who have brought you nothing, have given you nothing but false promises, and we're still here. Our lights are still broken, they're still telling us about our problems, and we're still not getting permits to fix anything. And we're still having to fight city hall just to remodel our kitchens. That's what's been here for so long. That's the fight. The fact that a small business takes two and a half years to get its door open. Do you realize the amount of rent they have to pay and cost upfront to just bring a service to us? The fact that they won't invite anyone down here. Why come we can't get a neighborhood target? How come I can't get these nice bougie things that they're putting everywhere else? Why did anyone come down here? You're talking between South Oxnard, Port Wayne Me, and all the people that drive up from the coast, we don't have enough to support it? Ridiculous. Actions speak louder than words. I've been the one that's been here fighting for your lights, fighting for street repair. It took us years to get Channel Islands fixed. Not to mention the forty-five years it took me to finally get a light on Date Street and Oxnard Boulevard next to Snippy's finally got that turn signal after forty-five years. And not to mention the fact that we're still fighting the same thing year after year, decade after decade in South Oxnard. The last council member that gave a rat's, you know what about us, was Bedford Pinker. He was the last one that would come down here, knock on the door. John Flynn was the other one who would knock on our doors and be in our face, "How can I help you?" Well, I have the same response. How can I help you, South Oxnard, so we can take our neighborhood back? So remember, Francine Castaneda, March seven. Thank you.
Okay, that was, I believe, for all the candidates, so thank you very much and appreciate that. Thank you to the final round. Thank you, I am not done yet. Uh, thank you to all the candidates for participating in this forum. It takes an enormous amount of time and energy to run for office. Not just for yourself, but also for your family, friends, and supporters. We thank you for taking part in maintaining our democracy. The committee would like to profusely thank all the people, especially the businesses in the area. Who passed out flyers and posted notices to increase awareness of the candidate forum. I would also like to thank the other members of the planning committee for their assistance in preparing for this forum. Len Scholman, Chair of Perrish Square Neighborhood, John Hyde, Chair of Bryce Candy Mark Neighborhood. And Amanda Meyer, IMCO Vice Chair and Chair of Waving Will Neighborhoods. The Timekeepers, John Cora Madalinas and Douglas Portello. Mr. Adam Smith for the City of Oxnard for Forum Logistics. The IMCO for hosting and the City of Oxnard for the use of the South Oxnard Center. We thank all the candidates for your time to speak to the voters. Good luck to you all and good night.
All right, we got one more. So I'd like to, I'd be one also thank uh the participants for coming this evening. And maybe your constituents more informed when they make their vote. I also would like to uh, uh, thank the city staff for running our meeting for us. And having the facility open for us, which is Adam Smith and Rolanda Pina. But I'd also like to thank the Youth Coalition Group, excuse me, please. And also like to thank the Youth Coalition Group, who is here helping EGO develop um, uh, residents' information. So that the EGO can reach out more to our um residents. Um, I'd also like to um, uh, thank, of course, we cannot do this without our many volunteers with the EGO members. And I would like to thank all of the um volunteers, especially our moderator, Ronald Arroyo. Um, uh, Len Scholman, Amanda Meyer, um, uh, I know I'm missing some. John Hyde and um also Doug Portello and uh John Paul Madalinas. And I started messing up your name, I messed up everybody's, but anyways, I would like to thank everybody. Without these people, we would not have had this wonderful forum for you. And we'd love for you who do not have neighborhood chairs to get more involved and maybe start thinking about getting a neighborhood council going in your neighborhood. With that, I adjourn.